...for our local community. From a small dent to major collision repair, Hamilton Paint and Body is here for you. Owners Brett and Kim Guehen would like to say thank you for your business.
Northwest Alabama heating cooler, blowing away our competition.
Hi, my name is Randy Whitehead, President and CEO of Peoples Trust Bank. I invite you to view the live streaming of Hamilton City Council meetings every first and third Monday at 6 o'clock PM.
Hello and welcome to Sports Gallery here on the Court Square in Hamilton. Come by and see our huge selection of fall. We carry a full selection of Nike, Oncloud, Hoka, Brooks, Merrell, plus Irish Setter work boots, and much more. And remember, here at Sports Gallery, we have a huge selection of men's and women's clothing. All the new fall arrivals are coming in daily, from Coastal Cotton, Southern Shirt. And remember, we have a huge selection of women's Southern Shirt, including all our very popular lounge wear. And here we have all of our vintage concert tees. We keep a huge selection. We keep them moving, different models all the time, any band. Let us know, we'll get it for you. And here at Sports Gallery, we now have a good selection of Aggie caps and various designs, plus we have hoodies and sweatshirts. I would like to invite everyone out this holiday season to shop with us in downtown Hamilton here at Sports Gallery.
Get your perfect stay at the Holiday Inn in Guehen off of I-22. Enjoy our amazing on-site restaurant and bar with a lunch buffet every Sunday. Relax with a quick getaway with your family, and make a splash in our outdoor pool. Book your next event with us. Call us at (205) 468-4625.
I'm Rick Chambers with Marion County Funeral Hound and Scribe Memorial Chapel in Russell, Alabama. This is Glenn Cochran, our manager out here. Under the laws of Alabama that was passed in 2002, a funeral establishment has to be certified with the state and carry a certificate of authority before they can even talk to anyone when the time comes is guaranteed to be there.
Since 1987, Smith Furniture has been in business to serve the community with high-quality furniture at the best price. Some of our name brands are Homestretch, Ashley, Lazy Boy, Catnapper, Lane, Barbasset, GE, Frigidaire, Whirlpool, and Maytag. We offer finance in 12 months, same as cash. So stop by Fulton, Mississippi and see Jim, Shannon, and Joe at Smith Furniture, or call us at (662) 862-7412.
Tom Bigby Electric Cooperative was formed for the need for electricity to the local citizens that were living in the rural areas of Marion, Lamar, and portions of Fayette Counties. This line consisted of 12 miles and 22 consumers on the road from Guehen to Sullivan. Between then and now, there has been a lot of hard work and dedication from a great number of people to make this cooperative what it is today. Tom Bigby Electric Corporation would like to thank each member. You can contact us today at (205) 921-6712.
Scotty Sanderson, I want you to take the podium and tell us all about it. Blah blah blah, okay?
I'll try. I told them a while ago, I think I've been to y'all's council meetings and talked more than I did in eight years of being on the council, because I didn't like being on camera back then. Guys used to it since then. But now the boys finished runner-up in the state. First Mout Trophy we brought home in 10 years. Football was the last one to do it. I think it's been about 20 years ago, cross-country finished runner-up then. But we were told today, we're the only team in the state out of, how many was it?
192.
192 teams. All of our kids from sectionals to state improved their times, from sectionals to state. At the state meet, out of 14 kids, there's eight boys, six girls. So 14, 11 of them. Let me turn it off, I can talk loud. So, out of 14 kids, 11 of them at the state meet PR. So, personal best. So 11 out of 14 PR at the best time they could have. Girls' team, they finished fourth. They were one point out of third place. And girls' team consists of two seventh graders, an eighth grader, two ninth graders, and a tenth grader. And we did not even have a girls' team midway through the season. So to come in and finish fourth, and I almost want to say third, is a remarkable feat for them. The boys' team, on the other hand, very, got one 11th grader? How many tenth graders? We got two? Two tenth graders? Four? Five? Ninth graders? So, very, very young team. We had our wrap-up meeting today, and I asked a couple, I said, you know, how do you feel about the season? Are you satisfied? And had a couple, they know who they are, and said, yeah, I'm very satisfied. Some of the couple of the guys, I said, really? We're satisfied. We got second. And what do I call second place?
First loser.
First loser to me. It's great. I said, now, when we go to a state meet and you bring home a Mout, no, that's a remarkable feat, even in a loss. But, we can't be happy with that, because we did lose. It gives us something to work for next year, especially the girls. One point out of third, we're going to be really close next year bringing one of those home for the girls. So, but I want to thank, first of all, coaches that helped me, and these parents. These have got to be some of the best parents of any sport we've got. And I'm not saying that because they're in here. They really are. Without them, I couldn't do this by myself. Without the coaches and parents we got, they're remarkable, and I really appreciate them. But the kids, wonderful kids too. They know I love them, and they worked hard. And when I say they worked hard, from July till Saturday, they put in a lot of hours and a lot of miles. And our town should really be proud of them, because for the next few years, this isn't a one-time deal. I'm telling you, we're going to be here again a few more times. So, but thank y'all for everything y'all have done at our course. I told Scott, I told a couple others, when we held our meet here this year, that was one of those, it's just kind of a run-through. What do we got to improve on? What do we need to do different next year when we host this meet, when we have a full-blown meet there? And we had some of the people from other towns that were just blown away by our course, how they loved it. And I'm like, well, wait till, you know, it's not even done yet. So, thank y'all for everything y'all have done there. We really do appreciate it.
We're just getting started, Scotty. We're just getting started. On our improvements over there, we're supposed to have the final numbers, so we can put this thing out to bid and build our state-of-the-art track. It's going to be the best track you guys have ever laid eyes on. And we're just so happy that we're able to do it for you, so you can get your practices in and get better and better at what you do. And we're going to do some more tweaking on our cross-country course for you also. And it's going to be really, really fun. And we're so proud of you, young folks. And I want each one of you to stand up, with us go down the line. I want to hear your names, and give us your grade that you're in also. We'll start with the front, as we start. Just everybody stand up.
I'm Mike Tyler, I'm in the 11th grade.
I'm Ian Colton, I'm in the 10th grade.
Jonathan Fleck, I'm in the 9th grade.
I'm Javon Dawkins, and I'm in the 9th grade.
Kate Woodaker, 9th grade.
I'm Mike Jones, I'm in the 10th grade.
Bernie Besser, I'm in the 10th grade.
Josh Webb, 9th grade.
Jake Webb, 9th grade.
Anderson Stray, I'm in the 9th grade.
Any more track members back there?
We've got about three or four, two girls, 7th grade, two of our 7th grade girls. They're playing a basketball game right now.
Okay.
And we've got an 8th grade girl and a 9th grade girl that couldn't make it tonight. So we got a couple that are playing right now. And let me finish, let me add this too. Like I said, we got 14 kids this year. I'm hoping to double that next year with some middle school, with a JV team. And then, today started the first day of indoor track practice slash outdoor track practice, but started the first day of indoor track practice. And we've got approximately, I'm going to say 60-plus kids signed up for track. So, you know, we, a lot of them now, a lot of them play basketball, and got some, you know, they're at basketball practice right now. That's taking priority over that. But we got about 60-plus signed up for track right now.
That's super. Any of you young folks want to say anything tonight? You want to tell us about your event? What was exciting about it? Anything like that?
None of them are going to want to talk, but I'm going to put the pressure on them. And I'm not going, one of them's got to say, and I know who it's going to be, but one of them's got to step up and say something.
I'll say something. I like, I like running cross-country. Our coaches are amazing, and you know, the kids here are amazing, especially Steven, they're just wonderful. I like them.
This is what I used to hear someone say about a distance runner. I got my second wind. Can you feel it when you get your second wind? Yeah, it's great, isn't it? When you're really in shape, and you can run that distance.
The funny thing is, they sure do like to talk at practice, but they're really quiet right now.
Yes, yeah. Well, I'd love you to come up here and meet with the council and let's have a picture, okay? All of you young folks, come right up here and get in the middle with your trophy. And we're going to get behind you, because we stand behind you fully. One of you young men, grab the trophy there and display it, and we're proud of y'all. So, look around.
One, two, three. I'm going to take a couple of them. Bob, do you mind moving just a little bit to your right?
Line, okay.
Down on the floor. All right. One, two, three.
Mama Bear's got to face it over.
Guess y'all see they laugh at me.
Is that it? I got to tell one more story now. That reminds me of one other thing.
Okay.
So the one that made us get back up there and take a picture, she asked me, we're at the awards ceremony. Listen, it is freezing cold, and it's raining at this time, okay? I mean, it has really started raining, and it's cold. We all have a, like a maroon hooded pullover that's kind of waterproof a little bit. And they all got it on, except like, one kid, he didn't wear it. And she goes, what? I'm getting to that point. Leslie, let me finish. So, she goes, do you all want them to have the pullover on, or why do you want them to wear it?
Yeah, let them wear the pullover. It's cold and rainy out here. She goes, no, they all don't have it. They all got to wear their jersey. Well, their jersey is a tank top. So that's literally, she, after asking me and me saying, yes, they can wear the pullover, she goes, no. Why did you ask them? So they all had to take their pullover off, and literally, did y'all not freeze to death?
Yes.
Hamilton looks great, across that jersey. He gets the Hamilton mask and player, that's what I did.
So, they can all think what I call a mama bear out here. And here's our, here's our mama bear as one of the kids. That's what I call her. So, but thank y'all very much.
Need a few of those too. We're real proud of the cross-country. We looking for bigger and better things out of you guys. A first-place win for both teams would be just extra nice. And we'll do something big for you if you do that. I mean, really big. We're going to build you a $5 million track complex over there. But we'll do something bigger than that.
Y'all would like to shut me up. Now, the boys, they were the number-one public school in the state. Girls, the number-two public school. So, now, of course, teams are proud of us.
This is just super. We couldn't, any of you guys want to say anything? Word of encouragement?
I just want to say, congratulations. We're all proud of you. Scotty, or Coach Sanderson, I'm sorry. Coach Dudley, you know, appreciate y'all putting the time into it, because I know it takes a lot of time. And parents, it takes y'all too, getting them there and getting them to practice. I know Scotty's pretty demanding. So, but thank y'all, and glad y'all was able to come. And we look forward to seeing that being blue next year, okay?
Who are those?
Scott here, congratulations. I hope you get out of it. Very compassionate. Again, I'd like Scotty to say a place personally, to bring home the title next year.
Stand up. You need to, you need to look at Jake's shirt right there. That's our motto right there. No excuses.
Turn around.
Very proud of all y'all. You're all representing Hamilton extremely well, and we're real proud of you. And look forward to what we're going to do across the street over there, and I know it'll happen. And gosh, from an old council member, and been here many years, real proud of y'all, and real proud of our school. And I'm thankful that we can help, because in years past, the city hasn't been able to help. So now, we've got the funds to do things that will only help you for down the road. And even kids that come, 2nd, 3rd, 4th grades, Scotty, as they come up and see that over there in a few years, just think what it's going to do for the future of track here. And bring a lot of people here too, as far as track meets and stuff like that. So thank you. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank y'all.
Scotty, some of these cross-country matches, is that, how many people do you mean, do you see at some of these matches?
The biggest one we went to, which is in Moulton, which, size of Hamilton, was just a huge, and how many did it say was there this year? Almost 4,000 runners there. Now, they have the facility to host something like that, because they have the parking. I mean, it takes a lot to host that. We went to one in Huntsville. There were teams there from Miami, Florida, New Orleans, South Carolina. But just breaking it down to the ones like, that we go to as local, how many would you say at some of those other meets we go to?
Thousand?
Yeah.
Because they have seven races, they have boys and girls, and they just put them in classes. It depends on the registration. If you've got 7A, 6A, 5A, then they start combining. If you've got smaller numbers, but, you know, most of those have 150 runners per race, of boys and girls, and then by classification. So it just scales from there.
That was my thing at the first cross-country meet we had out there. I took a picture of the parking lot, and it was just a small.
That was just.
Four, with four by 10?
That was us viewing Winfield, Hailwood, and Pitt. I mean, that's all that was.
I was thinking, we're going to have to have a bigger parking lot.
Saturday, all Southern classes was running Saturdays. And there was people from all over the state of Alabama. Parking lot was full. We got there about 7:00 AM, and parking lot was already about half-full at 7:00 AM. Last race was at 12:30. I think Guehen ran the last race, come on, 12:30.
Again, congratulations. We're about, we're about to have a council meeting now. Y'all are welcome to stay on, or if you want to conclude this for the young folks, we'll let them go and.
I think we got some that's going to go to the basketball game. So, appreciate y'all having us.
Mothers and dads, congratulations on these fine children you've raised here. We're proud of them. We're standing behind them, believe me. Just a couple of comments before we get into our public hearing, which is our first thing on our agenda tonight. I did want to thank the Chamber for the excellent Fall Festival that they put on here in Hamilton. Even with the threat of rain, we had a great turnout. And I congratulate them for a great event, for our Buddy Hatch River Fall Festival. We have a special Veterans Day program coming up at Bevel College on the 11th, which is Veterans Day, complete with a meal for the veterans, and a color guard will be present. Other special recognitions will be there also. And it's going to be a real nice day at Bevel. And just come on down and enjoy the veterans program, especially you veterans that are out there in the county, not just our city, but countywide are asked to attend. This will be a first annual, and we hope many more to follow. Also, the Christmas tree lighting ceremony here at City Hall will be on November the 15th at 5:30. And it'll be complete with Santa, Mrs. Claus, lots of children singing, performing, dancing. Fred Hunter will be here with Channel 6. He's our absolutely Alabama representative, and they're going to be taping in Hamilton to have the one-hour program that will air statewide. As I understand, Fred told me, they've got five major cities they're in, and they plan to play back this Christmas program in all those cities. So, that's going to be a big thing for Hamilton on the 15th. We moved it from the 29th to the 15th because of conflicts with plays that the kids are having and on those other dates. So, we've moved it up to the 15th. Got new lights on our trees this year. We think it's going to be a very, very special evening. So, want all of our community to come out and enjoy lighting our tree this year, and then the ceremonies that go with it. The Chamber is also sponsoring a, an event, a ribbon-cutting event on November the 12th. This is for Mem's Ranch 2, R2 Ranch. It's their grand opening and Fall Fun Day. And there'll be free food. He's inviting folks to bring their horses, cutting horses, and barrel racing horses, and enjoy their nice arenas they've got up there on the ranch. The address for this property is 2860 Grover Davis Road, Hamilton. So, any of you enthusiasts of horse riding, horse events, if you'd like to go up for the grand opening, our Chamber will be doing a ribbon-cutting ceremony there this Saturday. All right, with all that said, let's move on into our meeting. Before we have our meeting, we always have our invocation and our pledge of allegiance. So at this time, we'll stand together and have that. Our Heavenly Father, we thank you that we can pause and give you praise for another great day of life. Lord, we thank you for the many blessings that you bestowed on our community. Help us, Lord, to have a meeting that's, would be in your pleasing and in your will tonight. Guide us as we carry on the business for this city. May our city grow in strength, and in love, and in unity. And may we always do the things that are right. And guide us in our lives, and we ask this in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And you may be seated. We've got some more seats in here, young lady, if you'd like to come on up and find one of them. Or you can stand there, either way, either way's good. Okay. Getting into our meeting tonight, the first thing on our agenda tonight is a public notice hearing that's going to be held, consideration of the request for a change of zoning at 193 Ashwood Avenue, from residential to a business zone. The owner of this property, Mr. Nathan Hawkins, has asked this request. At this time, all persons may speak either for or against this zoning change request. So at this time, we're having our public notice hearing, and we'll hear from those who may oppose this at this time. You can, if you'd like.
My name is Jenny Palmer, and my mother lives directly beside Nathan and Amy. She's been there almost 50 years. I also have permission to speak on behalf of Paul and Becky Steta. They've been in the neighborhood 50 years. And Ann and Jack Carter, they've also been in the neighborhood 50 years. They're opposed, and the reason is because we've called some real estate agents, and they say that it's going to depreciate the home values, also the noise, working on the vehicles, and just the traffic in and out. And that's the reason.
Okay. And you're speaking on behalf of your mom and two other couples?
Yes.
Five people. And all of them are opposed to the change, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
And it's nothing personal against them, but because they're nice people. It's the situation.
Okay. Any further comments? Okay. All right, do we have anyone else that want to speak in opposition of the zoning change? Okay. All right, let's hear from those who are in favor of this zoning change.
Hey, I'm William Bryant. I'm here with many others in favor of this, because everyone that knows Nathan, knows that for a long time, you know, that's all he does, is he works on vehicles. He helps people out. Long before this shop was built, many in that neighborhood have came at him, asked him for help, well, mechanic-wise, with their vehicles, and he does it, you know, without receiving compensation for it. Just doing it out of the good of his heart. Now, he's done mechanicing for a long time. He's had a shop here in Hamilton before. I think that, you know, I understand the concerns of the traffic in and out, and noise. The shop is a very well-insulated shop, so all the noise should be, you know, at a minimum. The traffic in and out, there's a lot of traffic on that road anyway. I don't see where that should be a factor. But somebody trying to put a business in this town, you know, if it employs one person, wish it all before. You know, the jobs are getting scarce around here, they're slowing down. So, I mean, I just think that, you know, it'd be beneficial to the city of Hamilton. That's what I can say.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak on behalf of being favorable?
I have four houses on that street, four. I'm not worried about property values. Traffic increase is minimal at best, because you're not going to have 10 cars in there running in and out every day. I don't see where that's a problem. He's insulated the shop, noise shouldn't be a problem either.
Hi, I'm Dr. Bryant. I live just around the corner from Nathan and Amy, and Nathan has helped, I'm one of the ones in the area who has asked him numerous times for his mechanical help and expertise and things. And like they said, he does a lot of it out of the good of his heart. I can see their house from my house through there. I never hear anything, but I mean, that's not right next door, but I don't see that there should be a problem with him being able to do good for himself and the community and down in Hamilton, you know, by opening his business there next to his residence.
I'd like to say just thank you for everybody that come up here today to talk for me. I do do a lot of things for the neighborhood, anybody else. I don't know exactly what it would do to the property value. I don't have that number. I don't have that number. But that neighborhood's a little rough around the edges anyway. I just put a very expensive shop on there that I will pay taxes on. And we all know what that's gonna, you know? I, I, I do my part. I'm not allowed out there at the night or anything else. I'm not planning on having traffic in and out of that place. There is a lot of traffic on that road that don't belong there to start with. And I've told any cop in Hamilton, if they ever wanna just come over and park in my neighborhood, my house, and just watch it, more than welcome to. But I appreciate the time, but, you know, I got a lot of good friends and I'm, you know, I, I feel like I could help the community because I am a good mechanic and, you know, I'm a no-nonsense kinda guy. I cut to the chase. If I can help somebody, I'm gonna help them. And, and if I can't, I can't, you know? So I am trying to make it look cleaner around there. I'm not perfect, but it's up to y'all, you know? I'm trying to do it the right way. I have a shop. I have race cars. I, I try to be whatever. I'm, I'm gonna be in the thing, working on my own stuff all the time anyway.
Yeah.
Really don't see what the difference would be other than the zoning issue, but, you know, that's out of my hands, you know? But I do appreciate being able to have my shop, to, to put my stuff in and it does look better around there. I just thought, you know, I, maybe I could help the community a little bit out, but like I said.
We, we did notice that you went ahead and started advertising for customers before we had a chance to vote on this.
Yeah, and I, and I haven't did much of anything. I've just tinkered whether I go to their house and do it in their yard or family and friends. That's basically about all I've done.
Yeah.
But, you know, I, I would like to.
So do you care which way we vote? Not really?
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, I, I would, if, if I was asking for a zoning change, I would've at least waited for the, and give the council respect enough to have a chance to vote.
I totally understand that, but I don't know the exact date when I filed to get this done, but we're within three months or so. And, uh, the hot shop business, I still got it going. Uh, I just, with fuel prices and everything else, and after putting up a very expensive shop, I, I just had to pull my resources to do whatever I can do. It's not in any disrespect for anybody here and I, and I want that to be known. I, I'm trying to feed my family and just be the best guy that I can be.
Yeah. You can see how these guys might feel tonight, we're about to vote on this issue.
Yes, sir.
And you on Facebook advertising every day for customers without.
I have been on there every day. And, and if I fix something for somebody and they post it, I didn't do it. I didn't ask them to do it. I, I'm not trying to get advertisement for anything. I know what I, the situation that I'm in.
I'm just saying, people were telling me, well, he's already advertising for customers. I thought he was asking for zoning.
I mean, that's why we're here today, but I have nothing else to say.
Just making a point.
I, I understand that and I, I've told you, I've just done what I can do. I haven't been on Facebook every day. You can look on my Facebook all you want to. I posted, if anybody needed any help, just let me know, cause I'm hanging around and I am a good mechanic. I haven't tried to draw anything over there.
We're having to vote against the wishes of people that's lived there fifty years. How long you been there?
About eight years.
Yeah. You're going against the old people's wishes that's been there fifty years. Does that matter?
I put roots over there now too. I'm gonna be there for a while. I mean, I might not be there fifty years.
I'm trying to make my point here.
Yeah. I mean, I, I see where your points go. So, you know, like I said, I got nothing else to say.
I've, I've owned houses there for twenty years and that is by far not the biggest problem on that road.
No, absolutely not the biggest problem.
Well, we'll give you that one. There's lots of problems over there.
Yeah. And we've waited.
But there's people that's got nice homes over there too that they care a lot about.
My house is one of them. I've got a pretty nice home there and I have no problem. I live on each way of the evening. It's no problem.
You live right next door to him?
I live, I can see his house from my house.
Mm-hmm.
I have no problem with it. We need people be able to feed their families, whatever means. You know what I'm saying? I mean, I don't see where that here in the short term, the way I see, I'm, I'm a trucker. I see what's going on in this country. It ain't gonna be long with scraps and stuff like that, and y'all know that. So it's much time to feed their family. Please don't stop.
Zoning's a tough issue because you usually have two sides, uh, and you've got, you've got a residential neighborhood that's gonna have a commercial garage in it now. We thought it was gonna be for his personal use, but he's changed his mind since he built it.
Change of plans, sir, to offer simply.
Trust it, man.
I mean, I, I own my own truck. I buy this fuel price to be. I know there's more than, more than me here that owns trucks.
Yeah.
Fuel is affecting everything from groceries you eat and everything else. So therefore, the man trying to make a living, and I'm, I'm saying.
And honestly, then.
Consider, honestly, opposed to what goes on in that neighborhood that is not honest.
Yeah.
Don't blame me. I have cameras. Don't come watch them and see the traffic in and out.
Exactly. Yes. Just, that's all I'm, I saw I'm asking in his behalf. If y'all want.
Mr. Counsel, do you have any thoughts or input about our zoning matter?
No, sir. It's properly in front of the council that the, uh, planning commission passed upon it here, so.
Do you guys have any, any other questions for the property owners or the surrounding folks that live?
Hey, have you been mechanicking there for a while? I mean, for like about years, I mean, since I've been living there.
Seven years I've owned a hot shop truck. I, I come in on the weekends and I've had work.
I was buying Luster shop the other day and it's nice, you know?
I mean, I, I didn't try to throw scrap. I mean, I was trying to depreciate the value of anything through there, if not add a little to it.
Yeah.
It's not like you're gonna be parking fifty cars out there. I mean, when they're, when you can take somebody, you can bring it in then. It's not show fifty cars out there and do it one at a time.
I got very little parking in my front, which we talked about before in, in the zoning committee, you know? I'm not planning on getting over one of them like, you know, a lot of these shops that you see, cause it happens. It happens fast. People, people bring a vehicle to you and their, their car needs a transmission, it's at three thousand dollars. Well, that vehicle's gonna have to sit somewhere and be hauled back to their place, you know? And I, and I know that and I understand that. And I'm willing to do whatever to get that vehicle back to that person's house or until they can afford to fix it, period. I, I'm not trying to clutter. If there's any clutter over there, it's because I own that clutter. But I'm not trying to do anything. I, I try to make it look as nice as possible. I could, I could bring you the receipts of what it costed me to do what I did right there. And it wasn't intentions on being a shop right now, but just I've been backed into a corner. And the trucking's not there for me to provide for my family. So, turning riches is the only other thing I know. And I just did put a lot of money into that shop and if I can do it, y'all allow it, then that's what I'd like to try. But I, you know, again, I don't know the numbers on what is gonna hurt somebody's value of house. But I, I honestly don't think that it should hurt any, but I feel like it would help the situation over there, but.
The two bragging mobile homes on the corner would hurt it worse than that.
Any other ques- any other questions?
Oh, yeah. I know.
Did the, uh, planning commission approve it, Nathan, or just pass it down to the council mayor? Or what did they say when you met with them?
Said we had to run it in the paper and do all the, the steps to get here tonight.
Okay. You hadn't bought a business license yet?
No, we're in.
Process, trying to see, okay.
Been seeing in my truck inside of it. Well, I didn't really have to go into detail on this because all my money was made outside of this area anyway.
Right.
You know, if I haul out of Hamilton, that'd be different, but I wish there was a lot to haul out here, I'd still be doing it. But now I'm just trying to do it the right way.
I know.
I, I'm not trying to disrespect anybody in this town. I love this town, you know? I, I help anybody in this town, whether it's in my neighborhood or outside my neighborhood.
And he's done that long before we put shop there?
Yeah. I'm, I, I under- I, I understand that too and I, I feel for you, cause I know it's, I didn't know all the opposition from the neighbors would be speaking of, you know, I knew this was on agenda, but I don't know if I'm prepared to vote right tonight, but I'd do whatever y'all wanna do.
Any questions, Scott?
I don't have any questions.
Okay. Uh, Nathan, your matter is on tonight's agenda for a vote and, uh, y'all are welcome to, to stay and see how that comes out. We got a few other items we're gonna, it'll come up in line in just a minute. When I spoke, uh, you know, we're gonna vote, after we vote, if we vote to rezone you, uh, you know, pretty much, you know, you have to say so, uh, whether it's cluttered, whether it's not cluttered, you know, you say it, it won't be, but, uh, it hangs us out to dry once we rezone it and make it commercial. So you can make us look really bad tonight or in the future.
So we won't.
If you want to.
All these others that are getting told month after month, you've got seven, seven days to clean up their spot and it's been like years and years and their spots aren't even looking worse.
Yeah.
What y'all been about that? Ours is not gonna be cluttered. We live in, we live around people. Me, I don't do clutter. So we're not gonna have clutter. We're not gonna have crazy hours, normal business hours. And there's really nothing that, as far as noise goes, yeah, we have race cars because we race. We race. If the noise that's heard is our race cars that we're tuning up, are working on, which is very seldom. Other vehicles, there's no noise. There's no, there's no more traffic. I mean, if traffic did come here, it'd be for a reason. The other traffic that's coming in and out of that neighborhood and you can barely see the paint on their car, that's for reasons that somebody else needs to take care of. We're the worst of worries in that neighborhood.
Okay.
There is another business on my trip. Worked out of, they, that's their office anyway.
Okay.
That's the boy out of business, he's on that job, that's pretty nasty.
If there's nothing more, then we'll need a motion to conclude the public hearing and move on into the council meeting.
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
We got a motion, a second, those in favor of concluding the meeting. Okay. Y'all can stick around, we'll vote in just a few minutes. Recommendation to approve the minutes of the October seventeenth, twenty twenty-two council meeting would be the first item on our agenda tonight. I make that recommendation.
I make a motion.
We got a motion from Ross. We need a second. Second from Matt. All those in favor of approving those minutes? Thank you. We have a recommendation to, uh, approve the paying of our accounts payable bills for October twenty twenty-two. We'll need a motion to pay our bills.
I'll make a motion.
Scott Robertson made the, the motion. We need a second.
I'll second.
Scott Tyra, second. Those in favor of paying our current due bills? Thank you. Item three is a recommendation to approve our annual agreement with the Northwest Alabama Regional Library Association and the City of Hamilton's Clyde Nick's Public Library. Uh, they have an agreement and this agreement allows an opportunity for grants and other revenue, which provides books and programs for our, uh, library. This is, uh, something we do every year and we'll need to, I think, continue. I recommend we continue.
I make a motion.
Ross made the motion to continue. We need a second. Matt made a second. All those in favor of continuing that agreement? Thank you. Item four is a recommendation to approve the rezoning request made by Nathan Hawkins for his property located at one ninety-three Ashwood Avenue that would change this property from residential to business. We'll need a motion and a second on that matter.
I make a motion.
We got a motion from Ross. We need a second.
I'll second.
Second by Scott Robertson. All those in favor of making this change? Those opposed? We have a four to two split. The majority is gonna rule on this, Nathan. You are approved, uh, here at this meeting tonight by, and as you can see, guys are standing up for what they think might be the right thing for the other residents. I'm gonna vote with these guys to let you try to make a living and I'm expecting you to respect this city while you do it.
Yes, sir.
Anything outside of that is gonna rediscipulate me highly and I'm gonna point it out to people. It will hurt your business, cause if you hurt us, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have a feeling about it.
Let me say something, Nathan, I'm not against you, man. I got my own business too. Our business, half family been in business forty-five years. I just think about the neighbors in the neighborhood and you're right, your neighborhood needs cleaned up and it's not yours. I've seen your house and I've seen your shop and it's excellent. There's nothing wrong with it. There's trashy stuff in the neighborhood that needs to be taken care of and that's on our backs, cause there's probably drug traffic and everything else on down that road that's, you've run a lot cleaner organization than that. So we gotta do some stuff on our end, but I want you to know right up front, I'll tell you to your face, I'm not against you. I want you to be successful, I want you to make a good living for your family. And if I have a mechanic needs something, I may come over there myself. So, I mean, I, and I don't want you to take it personal. But I've known other neighbors all my life, Paul Stedtum and Jack Carter and all that. There's, you got a great neighborhood and I'm just kinda taking up for them, but not trying to hurt you. That, you know, if you'll accept that, that's fine. If you don't, that's fine too. That was my reason. Now, I felt like I should explain.
And I know what you're talking about, the other issue. I wouldn't brought my opinion until a couple weeks ago. And that, y'all are all right, it needs to be addressed.
There's other problems on that street besides the shop. We're aware of that. We're gonna try to address them and, and we've got a compliance officer now. We're gonna do our best to help y'all up there on that street to finish cleaning it up. We're behind our schedule on that and we admit it. We give some people a chance to do it on their own, but we're gonna start further complying with rules and that street is, needs some attention if y'all notice roundabout. So we're gonna be giving it that attention. And, uh, we wish you luck, just abide by our rules and we're gonna get along fine.
Yes, sir. And I appreciate y'all. Thank y'all.
Good luck to you.
I've known you, I remember back when you worked for Tommy A.
Yes, sir.
So, that's been a, that's been a day or two.
Long time ago.
Yeah.
Good luck to you, Nate. I, I really mean that. Good luck to you.
All the best to you. Item five, a recommendation to approve local artists messy miles to start the process of painting murals in various locations in the City of Hamilton. Once permission from the building owners has been obtained and, uh, we'd like to put that in the form of a motion tonight.
I make a motion.
Scott Tyra made the motion. Scott Robertson made the second. Those in favor? Thank you. And I think that's gonna add some real class to our city. We'll be, uh, trying to make recommendations on those murals that they are, uh, sensitive to the times and sensitive to the area that we live in. Item six on our recommendations would be to join the C Three of Northwest Alabama for an annual fee of twenty-five thousand. C Three is an organization that promotes economic development for Marion Lamar and that counties by marketing this region to new and existing businesses. Uh, before we vote, I'd like to have a motion and second.
I make a motion.
We got a motion?
Second.
We had a second. All those in favor of joining the C Three? Unanimous. I'm so proud. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom. Doing a great job. You like to say anything?
Tom, I want you to stand and tell us about C Three and why we want, need to be a Tom, I want you to stand and tell us about C three and why we want, need to be a member and why we are now a member.
Thanks, Mayor, uh, thanks, Council. Uh, I'd say that, so the two main reasons are, um, economic, we talked about this, economic development is, is a team sport and kinda internally as a region, I think we, we can do great things together, working together. I think with uh Hamilton being, I think, our largest municipality, having uh one of the best industrial parks and, and really a great community. I, I live in the community, um, great school, a lot, a lot of resources. I think that leadership of having really the, like one of the prime municipalities kinda leading that, that overall team, being part of the, part of the team is, is really critical for us, working together as a region, kinda internally and, and all kinda, all kinda working, driving together for uh industrial projects and commercial projects and really looking for opportunities going forward. And then kinda externally, uh, when we communicate with site selectors and, and companies from outside the region, a lot of them really highly value communities that work together, they're, that collaborate regionally. I think it's really cool that we have three counties, a three county regional alliance. Um, and what I think, they like to see everybody, everybody on the same page. Kinda behind the scenes, sometimes we may, we may have some disagreements, some of the different communities may have different, different disagreements, but externally, you really wanna send that message, um, that, that it's a community where everybody's working together, pulling together. I think that, that makes a big difference in marketing. Since I've been here about a year and a half, um, so I don't, I don't take credit for this, but just existing industry expansions, which has been, we've had really robust existing industry expansions over uh, over actually three hundred, three hundred um jobs and hundred, hundred fifty million in capital investment. Um, and then we've had new projects, kinda, I sort of describe them as kinda singles and doubles in, in, in baseball terms, a lot of, a lot of wood products activity especially. Um, that adds up to, since I've just been here, about fifty, fifty million capital investment, um, and another hu- hundred and fifty plus jobs, I'm moving upward at this point, so we've had really good activity and I think we've, I feel like we have good opportunities to kinda convert a couple of those doubles into triples and home runs. Um, and we've been working together as a community. Our, our philosophy is we're gonna promote industrial opportunities in, in all three counties, um, and with you, with y'all having one of the best industrial parks, we've, we've submitted that park for projects and really actively marketed that, um, that park and other, other uh sites and buildings in, in the city of Hamilton already. But with being members, I think we kinda, we, we pay special attention to members, work on commercial retail opportunities and work on downtown efforts and you all have a really good chamber, so I, I think by kinda wrapping that all up as being members, I think we can accomplish really great things together. I think it sets a leadership uh direction for the, for the region and for the community that I think is really critical. So highly appreciative of you all uh rejoining and uh happy to answer any questions and look forward to working with y'all.
Thank you, Tom. We appreciate you and I know you're a hardworking man, I've seen you at work and I believe you uh n- understand your job and know what, what it's all about and I, I think you're gonna be good for our region and just uh proud to be a member again in, in your organization.
Thank you.
And we're in full support of you, okay? All right, you bet. Come here, let me shake your hand. Any further business tonight? If not, we'll need a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
We're adjourned on that one, didn't we? All right.
For our local community. From a small dent to major collision repair, Hamilton Paint and Body is here for you. Owners Brett and Kim Guin would like to say thank you for your business.
Northwest Alabama heating cooler, blowing away our competition.
Hi, my name is Randy Whitehead, president and CEO of Peoples Trust Bank. I invite you to view the live streaming of Hamilton City Council meetings every first and third Monday at six o'clock PM.
Hello and welcome to Sports Gallery here on the Court Square in Hamilton. Come by and see our huge selection of fall. We carry a full selection of Nike, Oncloud, Hoka, Brooks, Merrell, plus Irish setter work boots and much more. And remember here at Sports Gallery, we have a huge selection of men's and women's clothing. All the new fall arrivals are coming in daily from Coastal Cotton, Southern Shirt. And remember, we have a huge selection of women's Southern Shirt, including all our very popular loungewear. And here we have all of our vintage conserties, we keep a huge selection, we keep them moving, different models all the time, any band, let us know, we'll get it for you. And here at Sports Gallery, we now have a good selection of Aggie caps and various designs, plus we have hoodies and sweatshirts. I would like to invite everyone out this holiday season to shop with us in downtown Hamilton here at Sports Gallery.
Your perfect stay at the Holiday Inn in Guin off of I twenty-two. Enjoy our amazing onsite restaurant and bar with a lunch buffet every Sunday. Relax with a quick getaway with your family and make a splash in our outdoor pool. Book your next event with us, call us at two oh five four six eight four six two five.
Uh, I'm Rick Chandler with Marion County Funeral Home and Scribe Memorial Chapel in Russell, Alabama. This is Glenn Cochrane, our manager out here. Under the laws of Alabama that was passed in two thousand and two, a funeral establishment has to be certified with the state and carry a certificate of authority before they can even talk to anyone when the time comes, is guaranteed to be there.
Since nineteen eighty-seven, Smith Furniture has been in business and served the community with high quality furniture at the best price. Some of our name brands are Homestretch, Ashley, Lazy Boy, Catnapper, Lane, Barbasset, GE, Frigidaire, Whirlpool and Maytag. We offer finance in twelve months, same as cash, so stop by Fulton, Mississippi and see Jim, Shannon and Joe at Smith's Furniture or call us at six six two eight six two seven four one two.
Tom Bigby Electric Cooperative was formed for the need for electricity to the local citizens that were living in the rural areas of Marion, Lamar and portions of Fayette Counties. This line consisted of twelve miles and twenty-two consumers on the road from Guin to Sullivan. Between then and now, there has been a lot of hard work and dedication from a great number of people to make this cooperative what it is today. Tom Bigby Electric Corporation would like to thank each member. You can contact us today at two oh five nine two one six seven one two.